Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We welcome everyone. And to start the meeting off, it's something that's always enjoyable as we welcome two new full-time employees to the city of Barstown. I'll call on Chief Doug Maddaway to introduce the two men that will be swearing in as new firefighters for the Barstown Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we'd like to welcome our two newest members. They both have started out as volunteers with us, went to part-time, and now be switching over to full-time positions with us. First, I'd like to introduce Scott Satchild. Scott, tonight has family here and his fiancee, or kids, I'm sorry. And she's going to do something different tonight. We now have badges. They will be actually receiving a badge, so tonight, a family member will actually be pinning the badge on her. And our next candidate, there he is, is Jacob Snellin. Jacob, if some of you might remember, was at our graduation ceremony for our recruit class at the beginning of the year. Jacob was one of our freshmen, and he was shortly hired as a part-timer after that, and now is going to full-time with us. So we're very excited to have both of these young men with us. We feel very privileged. Tonight, Jacob will be pinned by his mom and dad.
You gentlemen, join me, I'll try to head. Raise your right hand, and I'll read the oath for both of you all together. "I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of firefighter according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offended, so help me God." Congratulations, and we... You know, congratulations. It's a pleasure to welcome you all to our fire department. It's an exciting time now as we get ready to start the renovation of Station 1, and we continue to grow. As our community grows, though, our obligations to provide safety and support for our citizens continues to grow. And you all came highly recommended by not just the chief, but people that have worked with you already. So it was an easy decision to promote you guys to a full-time position as we cut back on part-time and we're adding more full-time positions to our fire department. So welcome. So I'd like to ask your mom and your fiancee if you would come forward and do the honors of pinning your badges to each one of you. Their hands are probably steadier than mine, anyway. I think Chief told me that both of you all have been talking about all the words and everything that you all wanted to say tonight. So I think you said you both had rehearsed some speeches, so if you've got anything you'd like to say to the community, they'll be happy to let you do so now.
Yep. I just want to thank you all so much for this opportunity to work with the fire department, and I'm blessed. I truly am blessed. Thank you all so much for accepting me in and coming with you down. So thank you all. The same thing Jacob said, you know, I'm truly blessed. The only thing I can do now is hope to make the town and my fellow firefighters appreciative and happy they've made their decisions. So thank you.
Thanks so much. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Welcome aboard.
like to address the council that doesn't have something already on the agenda. It's like the crowd kind of died down a little bit since we first invited them, so we'll move on then. Next item, we have a bid tab for our tree trimming services. I think you've got that in the packet, Eric, if you'd like to talk to the council about this bid and the company that we made.
Sure. If you recommend. So we received a one-bid from Ask a Tree Expert, who we currently use. We've been going on a three-year rotation. That was the last time that we bid this out, was a little over three years ago. Planning on doing the same this year. The rate that they gave was for one crew, which includes a foreman, a trimmer, and then either a third, a second trimmer, or a groundman for a three-person crew, plus a bucket, plus a chipper, all for that hourly rate. So we budgeted about $150,000 this year in our budget for tree trimming services, so this is what that would go towards. We received two no-bid letters from a couple other companies, and then a couple others requested a bid packet but did not submit a bid. So just the one bidder, but we do feel like it is a comparable rate.
We have been using this company for quite some time.
Yes, as long as I have been here. They've had our past two contracts, so we're using them, I think, year-over-year doing a bid, and we did a three-year bid that seemed to work out, so we'll be doing another contract with them pending approval.
And I would then ask for a motion from the council to approve the recommendations of Ask a Tree Expert, that will see to be our vendor for tree trimming services, or contractor, I should say, at 98, 83 an hour.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion, my councilman knows, and a second?
Second.
Second, my councilman haves. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, a second about to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion's carried. Okay, we don't have any HRB tonight. Minutes, we've got two sets of minutes, our June 25 meeting and our July 2 meeting. If there are any corrections or changes, I see. And if there is none, we can approve them by unanimous consent. Okay. I need one of the council members, if you would, introduce the first ordinance. It's a first reading, this is something we discussed at our last meeting, when we were discussing the need, or the lack of a need for more meetings, less meetings, and we decided to keep the number of meetings the same, but then change the hours that they would be starting. So if someone would introduce ordinance B-2019-08.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B-2019-08, and ordinance amending ordinance number B-2017-01, changing the times of the regular meeting of the city council.
Thank you. We have a motion, or is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I would like to ask our city clerk here, Little, to read, since Audrey Hayden, our city attorney, is on vacation this week, so Eric, you do the reading, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number B-2019-08, and ordinance amending ordinance number B-2017-01, changing the times of the regular meetings of the city council. Whereas the regular meetings of the Barstown City Council are held on the first Tuesday of each month at 5:00 p.m., and the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers on the campus of City Hall in Barstown, Kentucky. Whereas following a discussion at the July 2, 2019 working session, there was consensus of Mayor J. Richard Heaton and mayors of members of the city council to amend the time of all regular meetings to 6:00 p.m. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Barstown that the regular meetings of said city council are to be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month in the council chambers on the campus of City Hall in Barstown, Kentucky, at strike 7:00 p.m. at 6:00 p.m. And on the first Tuesday of each month in the council chambers on the campus of City Hall in Barstown, Kentucky, at strike 5:00 p.m. at 6:00 p.m. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of in conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Thank you, Gary. This is the first reading, so we'll have a second reading at our next meeting later this month. We have a second ordinance in front of us tonight for the first reading is B-2019-09, relating to our classification and compensation plan. I would ask that we get a council person to introduce that, and I'll have Greg Ashworth read the summary, or head of our HR.
Mayor, if I'm in order, would like to introduce ordinance number B-2019-09, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance style, an ordinance creating classification plan and compensation plan, and ask that Greg Ashworth please read the summary.
Thank you, David.
Summary of ordinance B-2019-09, Classification and Compensation Plan. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance style, an ordinance creating classification and compensation plan. This ordinance amends Chapter 35 Employment Policies, the Classification and Compensation Plan of the Municipal Code by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade, and setting the ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 and subsequent years. The amendment and additions reflecting number of positions, title and pay grade respectively are: Administration, 1, Enforcement Officer, strike, part-time, grade 105; Police Department, strike, 18, add 20, Police Officer, grade 109; Parks and Recreation, add 1, Program Facilitator, grade 104; Fire Department, strike, 9, add 11; Firefighter EMT, grade 107, strike, 10; Strike Firefighter, part-time, strike, grade 106; Cable Internet, 1, strike, Systems Engineer, add Chief Information Officer, grade 123. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law. The summary was certified by Audrey Hayden, City Attorney. The complete text of the ordinance is available from the city clerk at 220 North Fifth Street, Barstown, Kentucky.
Hey, this is the first reading, but I would ask Greg maybe to give a little background. Most of this is a result of the recently passed budget, but also one position, code enforcement position, is the result of Mary Little was now the city clerk, and he was handling both assistant city clerk, mayor's assistant, and code enforcement in his previous position.
So the mayor said it all. The only change that's beyond the budget, you know, so the police department, the parks and recreation, and the fire department were all included in the budget. I think we can all agree that it's time to have a full-time code enforcement officer, and I, you know, not only for nuisance ordinances, but we've been talking to Jessica about them enforcing all the, you know, drainage ordinances and all those other enforceable ordinances that she has problems, you know. They go out and identify those issues, but they don't have anybody to psych for them, and they go back and follow up on those ordinance as well. So, you know, we're going to add, when the, you know, provided you guys approve this position, we're going to change the job description to include some of those as well. The cable internet, the systems engineer, we changed Nahom's job description back when you guys approved that change. We changed that job description, and the chief information officer better reflects all the duties that we've added to his job descriptions now that he's in charge, not only internet, but cable as well. So, and that's the reason for that change.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Would a code enforcement officer, since it's going to be a full-time position, would that person be responsible for occupational license studies?
He would not. That would still fall under finance, but Ashley does all the work.
No, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. As far as, let's say somebody comes to town and they're working here and they haven't paid the occupational office.
Yes, if they don't have a permit, if they don't have a permit to work in the city of Barstown, yes, he would be responsible for...
He or she.
He or she would be responsible for that, is what, yes. Yes, sir.
Didn't we just create an ordinance last year that abolished his job and then...
He abolished the board.
Just the board, yeah, not the position.
Gary's done a terrific job of good that digitized and using, I better...
Esri.
Esri, yeah. I might be careful about me start talking about all this IT stuff that he's done, but he's really brought it up to speed in that regard and tracking it, and it's a much better program, also with the help of David Evans and Nahom and them. You know, we've now got a map, we can look at a map, we can see every code that is in violation right now. We know it was in the locations, you know, it's got spreadsheets tracking it, opposed to the old days of having just a hard file and trying to keep up with it. It's a much more sophisticated, efficient way to do it, but it also, as I own, in how many code issues we have ongoing. They're time-consuming, it takes a lot of time to get them, you know, complaints, we're short of going to court, and that's very time-consuming, so it's a lot, a lot going on here.
Mayor, does that also include HRB enforcing... Signs? Yes, sir. It would. That's already in his job descriptions with HRB and signs. Yes, sir.
And, you know, both Rochelle and this person, you know, their job is to kind of be our eyes on the street to kind of spot things that don't appear to be within code or in violation of certain ordinances. Along with police department, fire department, city council members, you know, all of us that are going around town, you spot something that just looks out of line, and there's some sharing of those responsibilities.
I have a question.
Yes.
Greg, will this position also be responsible for illegal food trucks, so that our HR person doesn't have to track them anymore?
I will help, but yeah, this person would be responsible for checking to make sure that they have, have gone through the mayor and Gary to make sure they got the proper permits, yes. I don't mind.
Greg, also with help with this too, it's good to have some extra help, but it's also, you know, takes away from other responsibilities. So that's, any other questions now? This is the first reading, we'll do a second reading at the next meeting on both of those ordinances. And then, speaking of Nahom and his new title, I'll call on you then to kind of go over these next couple volumes of cable TV changes, and then the programming committee. Changes, we've got the minutes.
So we, the programming committee met July 3, and wanted to bring the council up to date on their decision. We've had some requests to add the ACC Sports Network. The committee voted to add that channel. It does bring about some changes on the expanded basic in terms of our programming cost. We have some other renewals that are due, namely Viacom and Hallmark. These other channels actually offset some of the costs, for the first time, the programming costs from these other providers has gone down, so our net increase overall is going to be about 63 cents on the expanded basic. So we just wanted to let you, get you informed. We'll have an ordinance actually before you in the next meeting, and then if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Did the ACC network go live in August, is that correct?
They'll, the first game was on the 27th. Important games are not actually in September that everybody cares about around here. So we're going to try to get all that lined up before...
Are you saying they're not really white force fans?
There's just interest, but some are more than others.
And then I think you said that the committee will be meeting maybe in August, also discuss another work that you all plan on taking on.
Right, there's other things we've discussed about increasing speed that also will include in that ordinance. There's, we're also looking at shifting some of the costs, and we have a differential between county and city, and our current rate in cable TV, but we don't on the internet, and we've discussed for a while, as shifting that into the internet, so that we'll have some differential in cable TV services for internet-only customers. So only effect, one effect if they have both services. The county's a little more dispersed, so the cost of service in those county areas are a lot more, and so this reflected currently in the cable TV, but it's not in the internet. So we'll have that presented to you as well.
The average additional cost to the consumer?
So right now, it's about, on cable TVs, about $4.75. We're looking to shift about $3.75 on the internet-only side, and leaving about a dollar on the video. And of course, those changes would reflect how customers are, you know, are taking up our service right now in terms of distributing rates more even.
And our committee meeting, you mentioned 63 cents a possible order?
Six, that's for adding the ACC network. By the time you offset the programming cost that's renewing, for the first time, there are actually programming costs for those channels that are going down, so it allows us to add the ACC network for just over 63 cents on the expanded basic.
That's important that Eric can...
What's that?
681, I believe, it's going to be 681 for HD, and then it'd be 81 for SD.
Do you have a question? Thank you, Mayor. We've got the piece. This is the programming committee, which concludes the discussion of what the home discovered, so they're there for your review. And then I'd like to call, we have a guest, we have one guest here with us tonight who's anxious to be in front of the council, I think. I'd ask Wilma Sorrow, if you'd like to, the Bourbon City Bark Park is making a donation request, and Wilma's here to kind of speak to the request and maybe the needs they have, and why they're asking for the needed development grant funds. So Wilma, if you'd like to address the council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks to Betty Carr, I contacted her a couple weeks ago concerning some grant funds through the city, and when I walked in tonight, I was asked which hat I'm wearing tonight, so it's the Bourbon City Bark Park tonight. So with that being said, we have a wonderful bark park, and if any of you have been out there, it's on Highway 49, one mile, less than a mile past McDonald's on the left. We have done thousands of dollars of improvements to that piece of land. It's absolutely gorgeous. Last October, September or October, we had about $4,000 worth of trees removed that were dead, and we just use a lot of our incoming funds from the membership drives that we have to do upgrades to the park. Splash fountains are going in right now. So what we're asking for, I originally asked for $5,000, but that might be a little too hefty, so I backed it down to 2,500, trying to be a little conservative here. And a couple things that we would like to do would replace three security cameras. So the security cameras are all throughout the park, inside parking lot, even coverage for 49, the road, which is important to our local law enforcement officers, who if something's going on out there, they can contact one of us, and we can go out there and pull cameras. Done that in the past. We have no problem doing that. We would be more than happy to make that accessible to law enforcement for any type of activity. It helps curb the crime activity out there. We have found out that there are some drug dealing going out there, we posted signs that you are on camera, and we've not had a lot of issues with any of that out there, very rarely. It just really is a crime deterrent, as you know, with the cameras. So that cost is right around $1,000 that we would like to have assistance through this grant, replacing. We have a gentleman that has donated his time, and we're asking for the materials to be paid for for the swings. And it's a covered gazebo swing, and on the small dog side, and one on the large dog side, I believe. And that helps our elderly population, that brings their dogs out there throughout the day, and it's hot, and they need a place to sit. We have people that come out there on walkers, some in wheelchairs, some Alzheimer's patients. And that's just really great for our visitors and our elderly population, and me, I like going out there and sitting around and talking to our people that are out there and seeing what's going on in the community. You know, it's become not just a dog park for a lot of people in this community, it's become a visitor center. It's become a hangout for people who are retired. Me, when I get off work, I go out there and walk. We have walking tracks out there. It's just a really nice place just to go back out there and connect with your little dogs, and let them play, and you do your own thing, walking or talking to people, and just enjoying company of others. And it has really served a great purpose, being close to the Kentucky State Park, Kentucky Home. We get a lot of visitors from the campground, so, which is very much appreciated. We have all of our city council members, and you guys have really helped speak about the bark park around town, so thank you very much for that. Our last thing, if we have, if we get that extra little funds and, you know, push it over the edge, we are going to eventually, when we get the money, fix up the old concession stand for restrooms. There's no restrooms out there, so we have a porta john. There's always others, it's outside the dog park, and as you know, it's a keyed fob, you have to have a key fob to get in the park. That's for security, and that's because we, the only way to be a member is to pay like a $50 a year membership fee for your dog, which, that pays for mowing. It costs us $100 a week to mow the park, which is very reasonable. Like I said, last year, we removed $3,000, $4,000 worth of trees. We've got to remove five more, so we're trying to budget some money in there after we get some of these things done to remove some more trees, just for the safety of our patrons and anyone who comes. So that's why we're asking for that. The keyless fob would help us lock the bathrooms, you would need your key fob to get in, and once we get that done, then we can start working maybe with a plumber to get toilets set, new sinks set, and things like that. So that's down the road, maybe a year or so from now, because obviously, we don't have enough money to do everything, but our current needs are what's described in the grant that I wrote. But our current needs are what's described in the grant that I wrote. So does anyone have any questions? Yes.
How many members do you have?
Right now about 125. I've not done the membership roster for the last three weeks. Of course, I work full-time and I do the membership and fundraising. So, and I'm on the board for that. But about 125 and around 200 to 210 dogs, different types, ages, sizes. There's three areas for dogs, a small dog side, large dog side, training side. The Barstown Police Department uses, and the Nelson County Sheriff's Office uses that and has a fob, so they can come out and train their canines and let their canines run. They do that a lot of times in the mornings.
Aside from.
And Oreo. Oreo has an honorary membership. Thank you. We gave Oreo an honorary membership when he turned six months old.
She loves it.
Yeah, or she, yes.
Aside from regular members access, are there any other ways that other people in the community, I mean, if you get this out there, how do they initially? Do you have like a free trial period that they come in?
Actually, if they contact one of the members, we can go out there and meet them. I've done this numerous times. I have met people out there that wants to be a member, showed them around, kind of being a liaison between the Bark Park and them and let them kind of bring their dog in. We really try not to do that because we want to make sure they have their shots, they have their rabies shots. And this is for people who are really responsible pet owners. And we try to let this help the community, teach the community how to be a responsible pet owner. So then they can go to Save-A-Lot, pay the fee for the year, and then they have unlimited access to the park.
So if we have visitors here, there's no way they get access to the park without having that proof of vaccinations or whatever? So if we have visitors in town, they don't have access to the park?
They do. Actually, I'm meeting with Jeremy Riggs with Mobile Techy Home and they're going to start selling fobs at the campground for, because a lot of people from the campground go over there. And that's a $5 a day or $10, I think $10 or $20 a week for, because a lot of people will stay one week or just one day. And so Save-A-Lot, they can pick up this fobs and fill the paperwork out. And most people who have pets travel with their pets' immunization records. They have them quick access on their phones and all we have to do is see that at Save-A-Lot and then they can get a fob. And Jeremy and the Mobile Techy Home staff, they're going to start helping us just have access for visitors. And I would like to expand that eventually, maybe to some of our key hotels in town. But it's so easy for people to go to Save-A-Lot and get fobs. It's just right in town. Yeah, I wish we could have some sort of like little machine out there that you pay $5, scan your little records, but you know, we can't do everything. That's a lot of money. But great question and thank you for that.
Well, you all are leasing the property from the state, right?
We do and we pay $1 a dog to the state every year. So I think it's $1, maybe $1 or $2.
That's coming too.
I think it's $2. $2 per dog per year. And we're responsible for all maintenance inside the gate and we lease the parking lot. So that's included with that lease. And that's why the cameras are important because we want for security. We want to make sure that inside and outside safe. And we have had a few incidents where we went back and watched the cameras, you know, just to see what was going on and, and so, you know, it's a, it is a great, great little park for the community. We should be proud of this park. I have been told that it's one of the best parks in the state and most well-kept by visitors who come here. We actually have some visitors from Louisville that will drive here and just, they get a membership for a year and they'll come here and use the park, which is pretty neat. So we're lucky to have it.
And Councilwoman Hard is the sponsor of this and know, know second is going to be part of the group that helped this thing going. First game about converting it from the baseball field to a dog park.
And your wife Al is a big help.
Yeah, she was.
Same walk. Parks Secretary.
It's a good, good asset for the community and quality of life thing that is making a difference. So anyone would like to make a motion to either.
If there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation request of Barstown's Bourbon City Bark Park, $2,500. And I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Scheckels and second by Councilman Williams. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, and all in favor, stick a handout saying aye. I'll pose. Motion's carried. Thank you, Wilma.
Thank you all. And as part of the Bourbon City Bark Park, they want to thank you too because this is a long way and we'll update the council with all of our new updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under new business, we have a request for approval for a mobile food vendor application for the Bourbon City Barbecue. And the reason we had to kind of update it here at the last, oh, we had part of this application earlier and with the transition that has occurred in the city clerk's office, we didn't have everything together, so we had to ask the applicant to bring us some more information. And he did, I think, hearing the city, also had to go see the health department. And would you maybe speak to that point about the one thing that still remains on this application?
Yes, Mayor. They had an inspection down on the trailer. It was plumbing inspection and then the health department statewide permit depends on that plumbing inspection. And they had a pressure relief valve that was venting inside the trailer. So they have to have that replumbed under the trailer. And then they would have it re-inspected and then they would receive their statewide health department permit. So I think it was just that one little thing that was holding up their application. They submitted everything else. They've got Jan Johnson Crowe's planning zoning approval and the business license and everything else in the packet. They're just waiting on that on Friday and then the health department will issue their statewide permit.
They've got the insurance and the pictures here that you can see the truck and the trailer that he has for this business. And we do have a means where you can approve it with conditions. So the condition obviously would be to get his plumbing issue resolved and then get his state approval before we would actually issue him his license. But we could go ahead and approve that, the CD, if you all see fit.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application with the condition that they get the plumbing inspection completed. And I'd like to say it's nice to see that this one's locally owned.
Yep. So we have a motion to approve the application. I'll second, may I? Second for Bourbon City Barbecue. So we have the discussion or questions? Okay, then all in favor, stick a handout saying aye. I'll pose. Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, next item, any members of the council have anything to bring before the council or the public this evening? Do you have anything to know of or anything? Cemetery deeds, we have one for William Litten. We can approve that by unanimous consent. Seeing none, then I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Scheckels and second. And Councilman Buckman, all in favor, say aye. I'll pose. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.